This conference will now be recorded.
June, 19th, is, I mean, switch the August to July.
It so much depends, talk to Kelly about what's on the agenda and what's, what needs to be addressed.
Maybe there'll be nothing, I hope.
We're like you. So we used to meet only on occasion.
Yeah, when all we lived at was new homes being built and there was that many.
Yeah, see, since about the time I joined, it's been every, yeah. I'll make sure I can be here next to you.
That's why I might be thinking of just depends on how cold it is on the ocean, you know.
That's one of the.
Gulf of Alaska.
Vacations are not.
We're ready.
We're ready for. If the Assistant Town Clerk can call the roll.
I gotta call it to order first.
Okay, call the meeting to order. I'm new at this. So we call the meeting of the Planning and Designing Commission Tuesday, June 20 to order. Please call the roll.
Rick Carey.
Here.
Member Varga.
Here.
Vice Chair Hutchinson.
That would be Hutchinson here.
Sorry. Member Ray.
Here.
And Member Ferber.
Here.
And alternate, Member Baptiste.
Even the audience.
Okay, we stand to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now's our opportunity for public comment. I see Terry Brown ready to hop up.
Well, I didn't want to sit.
We have a number of agenda items which there may be others that want to speak to. So this would be for non-agenda item, public comment.
I just wanted to, of course, tell you that I'm Terry Brown, Harvard Drive top, and ask if you have public comment at this point on the agenda, but on the other agenda items, you allow public comment after the board discussion.
Okay, the normal procedure is public comment before board discussion.
We're not all normal because the other thing I was going to ask about is that we talked about, you talked about the no approach lobbying that existed before. Am I correct? On individual projects.
I think that the policy has been that it's been, that's up to the individual commission members whether they.
That's what I wanted to be clear, that they follow the rules regarding public meetings and it will be up to each individual member. So when they come back in for the next meeting to discuss who they talk to about a particular project, if it's on the agenda item, am I right?
If I may, Mr. Chair. You're correct in terms of ex parte communications if a development plan is before the review.
Yes. I mean, the policy was a little different before. That's why I wanted to clear it up so that everyone knows what the procedure would be. Thank you.
Yeah, I think, and I think as Mr. Carey said, prior members all sort of agree that they wouldn't entertain ex parte communications, but I do agree that's sort of left up to each individual member.
That would be on the quasi judicial. So there's a difference.
Not false.
Today is not quasi judicial. This is advisory today. So there's different disclosure requirements. Thank you. Any other public comment? Not about a specific agenda item? And, right, so we have today kind of an unusual agenda. We have three items which are all draft ordinances.
We need to approve the minutes.
Oh, excuse me. I'm so excited to get into the main agenda. Yes, we have the approval of the minutes from our last meeting, May 15, for review. Does there any commissioner comments?
Approve to approve the minutes.
I actually think that you're missing from the roll call. Shields is missing from the roll call on the minutes.
That's correct, yeah. So you were here, but.
I was here.
Yeah, so.
Thank you very much.
Any other corrections, David?
I didn't see. Other than that, I can just slide.
You can see, okay. Then if we have a motion to accept these with the correction of Member Ferber being added to the roll, is, need a motion?
Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
And we have a second. Thank you. All in agreement?
All in.
Thank you. As I tried to jump ahead a moment ago, we have before us three draft ordinances. We act in an advisory capacity here. So although we will take a vote on these, we are not the voting party. We are only making a vote as to what we are recommending to the town commission. Town commission can choose to take our recommendation and act on it as recommended, amend it, or reject it. And, but it's an important role because the town commission has, doesn't have the time to focus on the details that we had, that we do. They don't have the same staff that we have. And so that is what we're planning. We will have on each item, an opportunity for public comment. It would be best for expediency if the public comment focused on the specific ordinance proposal and language in the ordinance proposal before us, because that's what we're here to, to review. And I'd like Christie to take and introduce each of these items as we go through them.
Absolutely. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the first ordinance we have is an ordinance that this commission actually first sort of discussed and then it was, the idea was taken to the town commission. The town commission provided direction to go ahead and start drafting the ordinance. So back in April of this year, discussions regarding the floor area ratio calculation in the town's land development code was discussed and some changes were recommended to sort of clarify how we reach the FAR calculation and really what that's based on. So it may be easiest if we actually go to the proposed ordinance and sort of walk through it. Just so everybody's on the same page, as Mr. Carey said, with an ordinance, this commission makes a recommendation to the town commission. The town commission then considers the ordinance for final approval. To adopt the ordinance, you need two readings unless it's an emergency, but you generally need two meetings. So at a minimum, to pass an ordinance, it's going to take at least a month, just so everybody's on the, I mean, two months, because it's going to require two meetings unless they hold a special meeting. So just keep that in mind for, for time purposes and why sometimes these things take a while to actually get adopted. So with this ordinance, one of the first changes that we are addressing is the definition of floor area total, and that's in section 1.3. And with every ordinance, the underlying language is what is being added to the current code. What is struck through is what is being deleted from the current code. So you can see that what we're trying to do here was one of the items that the commission had previously recommended was to make sure that habitable spaces, meaning spaces that are intended or are used for living, working, sleeping, cooking, or eating purposes, are included within the floor area total. So we're cleaning up the definition to make it clear that if it's intended or is actually used, bless you, as habitable, that would be included in the floor area total. Other areas that are not considered habitable, like unenclosed decks or patios, covered porches, balconies, are not included, but we'll get back to that in a second, because then we've added some language to say, except as otherwise stated, because this also covers a limitation on that. Then with floor area ratio, we make it clear that it's going to be based on your lot area. So their total sizable lot. Usable land area is struck because we don't have a definition in our code of usable land area. When we get to the later ordinances today, there was some language added with ordinance 202005 that set forth usable land area restriction, but we're taking that out because the calculation for doing your floor area total is really based on your lot size. So making that clarification. And then also throughout the code, lot area and lot size seem to be used interchangeably. So we've just added that to the definition to make it clear that we're talking about your total lot size or area. So those are just some tweaks to the definition to sort of clean that up. Then we get into the floor elevations, and this was a recommendation by this commission to clarify that garages or other enclosed areas intended to be used or used.
I have to make sure I read this right. Are included, let me see. Are included in your floor area.
Sure, I got it right.
The floor elevation calculations in terms of allowing them below grade, but that we wouldn't see habitable spaces being built below grade. So this was to clean up a concern that people would be using, creating storage spaces or garage below their grade, the floor elevation, and then using them as habitable space. The concern being obviously with flood elevations and having those that are not included in your floor area ratio calculation, but are truly a habitable space. And so we wanted to clean that up to make sure that whether you construct a building that has an area that could be quote unquote, at some point, used as habitable space, that we prevent that, that it's either got to be a garage or truly a storage space. So that was a cleanup issue there because there was a concern by this commission as to people perhaps constructing stuff below grade that would become habitable. So that change was made there. And then further down in that same section where you talk about floor elevations, we wanted to, this commission wanted to make a clarification that when you calculate your floor area ratio, that you do include the garages, similar structures in any place intended for habitable use, that that does get included in your FAR. So what we're trying to do is to, on the one hand, prevent people from building habitable spaces below grade, and then on the other hand, if they perhaps enclose them and start using them as habitable space, then that will be calculated towards their FAR, so that you can't create now something that is a large habitable structure that is excluded from your FAR because it's below grade. Does that make sense?
Could you, could you explain the NABD concept and what it, I believe it's seven feet in Ocean Ridge, because I don't know that all the people here are aware of that.
Maybe, I don't know if Mr. Gorman can, but that's my understanding too. Maybe Mr. Varga could actually explain it too. But this was that you have your base floor elevation and stuff that are actually below that. Your base floor elevation is based on, I believe, your floodplain, but then people could build some things below that, and this was a limitation on that.
I mean, I understand it.
That's my basic understanding. So Mr. Varga can probably provide.
One other thing is that, right now it's at seven, we go to eight. But homes right now, we have to go to 10 because FEMA is changing, FEMA is adopting the new 10 foot. So all their homes in Ocean Ridge are going to be at nine, which ends up 10 feet, you know. Seven is the.
The base.
Base. We add a foot to it. So now we're from nine to 10. And that's pretty much, if I'm going, I'm in Alapan, high flood, so I'm anywhere here. It changes, you know, all that changes along the way, but putting in there the eight, it's going to end up at 10.
And that's for habitable.
Yeah, that's all your habitable space. So then we're building homes, scale it to new homes, drop it 10, and then we got to traffic to garages way down because you can't go up or ramp like that when your street's at a foot and a half above. Send that foot and a half, drive it to 25 feet up your driveway, you know, you need a, you know, off road vehicle giving you a garage.
So for, from, the way I take this in is, houses are being built higher because of our floodplain, right? So garages are allowed, and other non-habitable spaces are allowed to be built below that grade because they're not habitable, and so you don't have to worry about a flood concern. With garages, it's even different, because if you put your garage at the same level as your base floor elevation, your pitch to get up there is so high that it's problematic. So we let people build the garage actually below your base floor. So the concern is people will be building more things at that below first floor level and turning them into habitable spaces. And there's concerns, obviously, if there's second flooding and they're living in there, or that now not being counted towards your overall FAR, so you're able to build a much, you know, denser or intense structure.
Maybe it's not fair to other people that can't have that. All of a sudden, they'll have to.
Right.
Have a lot more space and, you know, I'd build a little garage under my house. I got an extra space and I have more living space.
And there are some homes or some properties along A1A that back up to Old Ocean that are actually a full level elevation difference between what the A1A side is and the Old Ocean side. And there was a concern that there'd be a way to slip an extra story in there if we didn't clarify this in the code.
Yes, yes. So then if we go down to the change in 64-1, this is actually, there's a typo there. It's to clarify that the reference back to the floor elevation section should be 67-32B1, because that refers back to how they calculate the maximum floor elevation. It's, it's kind of getting in the weeds, but it was an outdated reference. So that's just a cleanup item. Then if we go further down, this is the limitation I was talking about originally when we talked about the definitions. The tweak we made into the definition regarding floor area total was so that the floor area total does not include unenclosed decks or patios, covered porches, balconies, or crawl spaces, except as otherwise stated. So what we've done is to add in the RSF, your regular single family district, and your RSC, your estate's district, is that the floor area occupied by roof, porches, and balconies are exempt from your maximum floor area calculation, but we added up to a maximum of 500 square feet. And this was based on a discussion by this commission about some development plans coming forward where they were building pretty expansive, covered balconies and porches, that the concern was they could be enclosed, and then if they're, when built, not counted towards FAR, now you have exceeded your FAR by enclosing an open porch. That's, I think we had one that might have been close to 1,000 square feet. And so that was the concern with that, to put sort of a limit, we're not going to count it towards FAR, but you can't build over 500 square feet.
You can build over 500 square feet, but it will charge, if you build 700, then 200 of it will come out of your FAR.
Yes. Okay.
And it's 500 total, right? So if you had two porches or three porches, it's 500 total of all the porches.
So it's not per.
No, that's right, yeah.
What I would say, that both a lot of homes through here for customers, everything else, most people between their first floor patio and second floor, over 500, I think you should be doing a study of how big everybody's porches are before we go. I don't see a reason to cut this down to 500 square feet on the idea that someone can close in their back patio, possibly illegally. They're doing it illegally. You know, I can possibly light my house on fire tomorrow, but I'm probably not going to. I mean, there's a lot of possibilities of life. We're trying to, we already have pretty strict guidelines on how much space we're allowed to fill our houses. You know, we have houses on 10,000 square foot lots, they can only build at 3,200 under air. At least give them some outdoor space, give them some space to use, in my opinion. That's just strictly in my opinion. We're going to make a lot of houses, not in form.
Are we going to public? We have discussion.
That's just strictly in my opinion. We're going to make a lot of houses, not in form.
Are we going to public?
Just over the idea.
Steve, what would you, what would you guesstimate, excuse me, what would you guesstimate would be most houses you build, how much would they have of?
I'd say between like, because you have the first floor covered balcony, a lot of times they stack on top. So we could have 600, 700 feet. But if we're looking at this, it's even going to the larger homes and things like that. I mean, this is something, as long as year in, year, as long as we're built to our percentage or lot coverage percentage ratios, why are we messing with people even more, putting more restrictions on them? We're kind of trying to make a, in my opinion, you're trying to make something to limit people and for what they could possibly try to do someday at some point, you know, like, yeah, I could go sit out in my house on the weekend here, my bat's blowing up, but I could go get concrete blocks and try to build myself a little room in the back. I mean, someone could go put glass windows all around that patio. But are they going to do it? I don't know. Isn't someone going to see it? Isn't a neighbor going to go look over? You go, gee, look at that, they just blast that all in. You know, I think we're just over, we're overstepping ourselves here. That's my opinion. I think we should just.
I agree.
I would agree with Steve as well.
Everything's worked over all these years, and I don't know if anybody's closed in a patio or anything like that illegally, but, you know.
I'm sure that they're happening.
They're not supposed to, and if someone catches them, you know.
I'm sure that they're happening, close, but I don't think that it's fair to put a maximum on, especially the state houses, like a 500 square feet really isn't that much.
Yeah, two, they get 250 on each floor. I mean, you had, you know, just, like your little front balconies, you know, people have a front balcony, go on their little front balcony to look over the street.
So I pretty much agree with you, but if someone does take advantage of this rule and they are in the wrong.
Yeah.
The town will have to take them to court, which could be difficult, I think you would agree. I don't, I don't see us, I don't really know what goes on with suits between the town and.
I don't know.
But I'm just, I'm just saying, if, if the town would be serious in pursuing somebody violating our code, then that's fine. But.
If I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, please.
What we would do if we found that someone had illegally enclosed a porch or balcony, we would take them to court enforcement. And so what then happens is if they don't correct it, continue compliance, ultimately find a crew, and then they have a lien on the property. So that's how that is normally handled. I don't think we'd actually take them to court unless for some reason it was, you know, something significant.
Irreconciliable.
Yeah, exactly. But that would be how we'd normally handle that, and then they'd have to put it back to what it was originally committed for.
If they did it, they were doing it without a permit anyway. So that opens, you know.
Would they be able to seek a variance?
Can always seek a variance, but.
Good luck.
You know, with, with new construction, it's often hard to show a hardship. Bless you. It has been shown for some new construction, but from a technical standpoint, usually you can't show a hardship for new construction.
I think this came out of mostly one house up in the beach area that had five or 600 square foot, second floor, covered balcony that was, you know, Commissioner Varga mentions that the size of the footprint is limited, but there really wasn't anything in our code that prevented the size of that no longer covered balcony. It was just, we asked the applicant, this is going to be my gym area and, and outdoor space. And so that's where this, these things often come up from a particular example. Commissioner Varga is correct in that if it were additional 500 feet of under roof on the ground level, that would be limited by the footprint. But there's nothing to really create the limitation on what he did in our current code. And we may choose not to put a limitation on it, but I wanted to share with everyone how that evolved.
I think there was another one too as well, that was actually on the first floor, and it was extended out from the building, and it was a.
There are two on Ocean Avenue that were similar to that, but they would eventually bump up against the maximum coverage ratio if they were on the ground level. So there is, as Commissioner Varga pointed out, there is a limitation on the ground level that doesn't exist, other than you have to have a structure underneath that, to support the second level. So it's the, the choice of this commission on what we recommend to the town commission. And is there any other discussion on this matter?
On this specific matter?
On this, on, yeah, this matter or anything here on this ordinance. Then we're going to open it for public comment.
Is there anything else that you wanted to talk about on this or everything?
No, that, that pretty much covers it. If the desire of the commission is to remove the limitation for the 500 square feet on roof, porches, and balconies, then we can suddenly delete those provisions from this ordinance. And then what I also do is, in the definition, as I mentioned early on, we would remove that reference to, except as otherwise stated, because there wouldn't be no limitation like that.
Yeah.
Hold up.
Could you tell us where that would be removed?
Sure, sure. So if you go back to the beginning of the ordinance in the definition section, 1.3 for floor area total, I would remove the last addition where it says, except as otherwise stated. And then we could totally take out the reference to 64-1, this is in section four, J and K, where those two limitations were put in place for the RSF and the RSC zoning districts. And that would take those out. So then truly, it's just sort of a cleanup issue with regards to the definitions and then your floor elevation and what is allowed to be part or built under the seven foot NABD, and then a cleanup item in section.
Just to clarify, if everything's built below the floor elevation, is that part of the FAR if it's a garage, for instance?
I don't believe so. I believe that garages are exempt from the floor area ratio and so are non-habitable spaces.
Whether they're, whether at grade or below grade?
Correct.
Okay.
Tara, do you want to address?
Hello, Tara Lambert, I'm an engineer. I have a couple things. So when you get into, page numbers, 67-32B3, and then it goes down to D as well, you're putting these elevations that are not what we are using. So these elevations do not, like when.
Yeah. So it's deep.
Mr. Varga was talking about the seven and eight. I didn't realize this was there. A, it's not blanketed over the town. It's dependent on where you are and what VAB you're in, which is dependent on the 19, 2019 preliminary map. So that's what we're using. So, yeah, these elevations don't stick.
So it would be wise to get the correct elevations in here?
Or more of per, it's, it's not this easy.
It's subject, it's subject to the, the maps.
Yeah.
Can it be cleaned up just to reference elsewhere in our code?
Yes, yes.
Should we put in a provision? Should we put in a provision or whatever the prevailing?
Yeah, I think it's more of a reference to FEMA.
Elevations should be, whatever the prevailing FEMA map should be.
Yeah, because it's not that easy.
It's not that easy. These things are banging, banging around. I agree with Tara.
Would you suggest that perhaps this could take a little bit more work rather than us trying to patch it up here? I, I know we want to get it done within two months, but I'm just.
I have to, and I can't do it right now. But yes, I could look at that. Really, it's just the elevations. If we could be a little, I don't want to say vague, but maybe, yeah, define it more as where we're looking for it, because you can't just say.
It's good, yeah, what it is.
I think I'd make a recommendation at this point that we consider deferring this to when staff can make some additional changes. But I believe the consensus of the commissioners that I heard speak up, which were at least three, so that would be, would be to have the 500-foot limitation removed in the redraft. Thank you, Tara.
Okay.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Steve, is there, is there though, the 500 feet, is there some type of, it can get, it can go too far as well, right? And that's where I think the concern has been in the past. Or are you okay just keeping it unlimited?
Because you can't, you can't build second floor balcony without a first floor, you know, you can't build, if you're building your whole, I think it's 35%, let's just say your lot's 35% coverage. You can only build X amount of space there, you know, of that way, then it's covered on the second floor.
Absolutely. The box is the box.
We're not making, we're not going to become tropicidal or whatever.
Corey, can you answer that?
To that issue, the other regulatory factor I suppose in the code is, is lot coverage.
Yes.
Lot coverage is limited to 35%, I believe. And, and that's, that refers to anything that is a roof structure. So it would include roof porches. So, and then the other limiting factor would be impervious area, which I think there's a, I think it's 75% is the maximum impervious you can have. So you have sort of a gradation of some stations.
So if we limit, eliminate the 500, we haven't just opened it up?
No, certainly not.
We've, we've worked this way over all these years. And, you know, all these things were already set in place to basically limit those.
Dave?
One thing that I want to have an understanding on is, is the garage, if it's part of, above grade, is it part of the FAR, if it's attached to the house?
I believe so.
Yeah, I do want to clarify that because Mr. Gorman pointed out that garages are included in the floor area total, whether above or below grade. And so are really any habitable space. So the cleanup is to make it clear that below grade for your floor elevation section, that you can only build a garage in non-habitable spaces. But the garage, even if it's below grade, would be counted towards your FAR.
Yeah. That's a question I had for you earlier.
Yes, yes, and I was wrong.
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought it's all part of.
Yes, the garage is all part of your FAR.
Whether it's a below grade or above grade.
Yes.
Thank you.
Good clarification. I'd like to open it up to public comment. Commissioners will have a chance to make additional comments after public comment if we so chose. And before we open public comment, I believe this is going to be before us again. So that changes whether you're going to step up now or wait until the next time. I wanted to let you know. So if there's any public comment on this particular agenda item, now would be the opportunity. Seeing none, is there a consensus of the commission to defer this to, to the next meeting, to allow staff time to have an ordinance that's ready to be forwarded to the commission?
Yes.
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 Okay. I don't think we need an action if we have a consensus, right?
No, I'll make the changes that were discussed and then work with Tara on that, see if we can perhaps tweak the NABD references.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next agenda item is number three, Discussion of Ordinance Review, Proposed Code Amendment 67, Article 2 regarding coastal construction line. And this goes in tandem with number four in many ways, which is the Discussion of Ordinance Review, more specifically with the lots on Old Ocean Avenue and Corinne Street. So there may be some overlap in the discussion here. And I'd ask the town attorney to introduce this for us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. So what I want to do is just take a minute to give some background on this. Y'all have all been provided several documents. There's a map that is of the entire town that shows a yellow line and a purple line. Perhaps we could put that up on the screen. This is a CCCL map. The yellow line shows the 1979 CCCL. The purple line is the 1997 CCCL. There's also an orange and black hash mark, and that shows the property boundaries according to property appraiser's office. If anyone wants a copy of this map, because you can actually enlarge it and look down closer at lots. Now, this is from 19, 2019. So the data is, you know, several years old and kind of the CCCL sometimes kind of move. But that's basically, you know, where they are now for all intents and purposes. So that's one map that you have. The other map that you have is the town's current zoning map. And the town's current zoning map shows you the different zoning districts. Now, one thing that will be coming up soon is a discussion on the town's comprehensive plan. The town's comprehensive plan sets your future land use areas, your, your land use designations. Those designations sort of are implemented by your zoning districts. So what I really want to draw your attention to is most of the town is residential single family. That's sort of that salmon color, you can see on the screen. The RSE district is sort of the pumpkin color on the map. And the RC district is all adjacent to the ocean, except that there's that southern area of RSE where there are some lots on the west side of Old Ocean that are not adjacent to the ocean. We believe at one time, all of those parcels along Old Ocean were jointly owned. So the ownership on the east was the ownership on the west. And over time, those got sold up. And now for the most part, except for the first set of parcels just south of Anna, the rest are all primarily individually owned by different owners. To the north on the zoning map, you can't see it on this one, it's primarily residential high density for your condominiums, adjacent to the ocean. To the south, it reverts back to your residential single family and your residential medium multifamily, which includes both some single family developed lots and multi-family developed lots. So those are the two maps that sort of give you an understanding of the town's zoning code. What we've also provided is a copy of the ordinance 2020-05, which has received a lot of attention as of late. So if you have that ordinance in front of you, I think the clerk handed it out, that might be helpful as we go through this to understand what was done and what wasn't done. So like I said, there's background on this. 2020-05 came up fairly recently because one of the property owners on the east side of Old Ocean, between Anna and Corinne Street, sought to redevelop his property. Ordinance 2020-05 was not codified online at that time that they started designing his redevelopment. And what that means is what happens is once the town commission passes an ordinance, it's adopted and now that's the law of the town. Well, online, we, through municode, the town provides everybody access to its code, including its land development code. But what happens is once a new ordinance is adopted, we don't, we have to pay municode to have it codified and inserted so that it actually flows now within the code online. When they're newly adopted, they just get posted to the front page of municode. So when you go to municode, you've got to look to see what's changed. And the newly adopted ordinances are there, which you have to click on to see them. They're not actually codified into the entire code. That happens usually several months later because there's cost to it. We usually like to get several of them before we codify. So what apparently happened with this redevelopment on Old Ocean was 2020-05 wasn't codified, so the design firm didn't catch it that there was a limitation on usable land area. So that's the big issue for some, in some respects in 2020-05, it put a limitation on usable land area. However, for the ordinance before us right now, this is on the CCCL. And what the ordinance 2020-05 did regarding the CCCL was it identified that the 97 CCCL was a limitation on construction seaward of it, so that purple line on that map. Anything seaward would require an FDEP permit, which was the existing law at the time. At the time, the town was just codifying that. The town also said that essentially the town would allow any development seaward of the 97 CCCL so long as you've got an FDEP permit. So one of the first changes that we're doing in this draft ordinance before you is to clarify that that's still the case. We are still allowing any construction seaward of the 97 coastal construction control line so long as you get the FDEP permit. Now, there are some exceptions in that, but for the most part, at least since I've been representing the town, the town has never held up any construction seaward of the 1997 coastal construction control line so long as they get the FDEP permit. What 2020-05 also did in terms of the CCCL is it identified the 1979 CCCL as essentially your setback line for construction. And it said that all construction seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line, which is the yellow line on the map, would require a variance. Now, that was a major change because previously to ordinance 2020-05, the town still just relied on FDEP for any construction seaward of the 97 coastal construction control line, which would include obviously the 79 coastal construction control line. So that meant anyone building seaward of the 79 had to get a variance. And that was a big change. Now, variances have been granted for construction seaward of the 1979 coastal construction control line. But for the most part, it's been like, I think, a cheeky hut in some non-habitable structures like pools and pool decks and those types of things. So what we're attempting to do with this ordinance that's before us right now is to clean up some of these issues and concerns about what 2020-05 did regarding the CCCL. So the first thing in the draft ordinance before you, if you look at section two, is to do a little cleanup to section 6717. That's the section that ordinance 2020-05 identified as anything seaward of the 1997 coastal construction control line can be built subject to FDEP approval. What I did was just a little cleanup because there's a Florida statute that prohibits every city from requiring like FDEP approval before it issues even a development permit. Some cities used to have in their code that before you couldn't even apply for like development review before this board, you'd have to get your FDEP permits. Florida statutes, they said, the Florida legislature said, no, we're not going to do that anymore. You're going to require it at the time of building permit. So this is to clarify that someone who's building seaward of the 97 coastal construction control line can come in for a development review. And if this commission approves it, they're all set to go. But before we issue building permits, they will have to show proof of their FDEP permit, which is essentially how it works now. It's just a little cleanup to be clear that we're consistent with Florida statute. So then if we go to section 6718, this is the sort of the meat and heart of what this ordinance is doing. And this is to retract what ordinance 2020-05 did in terms of requiring a variance for any construction seaward of the 1979 coastal construction control line and to allow the town to issue administrative permits for that type of construction with limitations. So, so basically what this does is it keeps in place that if it's an undeveloped property, for example, the dunes that are south of the residential estate district that are undeveloped, this would continue to protect them, except that the structures that currently exist, and there's some areas where there's actually a habitable structure, and there's areas obviously where there's crossovers and other non-habitable structures. If they're existing, they can obviously be rebuilt to their current footprint. But for those dunes that are not built on at all, this would continue to protect them so long as they're seaward of the 97 coastal construction control line. And if you look at your map, you'll see that most of them are seaward of the coastal construction control line. So it keeps that intact. Now, obviously, they could still seek a variance, but they can't get an administrative permit that this section would allow. The administrative permit that this section would now allow is really to address non-habitable structures and to allow for those existing habitable structures to be built with their existing footprint, even if they're seaward of the 97 or the 79 coastal construction control line. But then it refers to some of the definitions in Florida statute that talk about what can be permitted by FDEP seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line. So it's now, the basis of this is to allow an administrative permit process versus a variance if you're constructing seaward of the coastal construction control line, 79 coastal construction control line. What it does limit, as I said, is new development of habitable major structures like homes, substantial improvement or expansion of existing habitable structures, all seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line. of the 79 coastal construction control line. Those would have to seek a variance. So it's trying to maintain what currently exists as our limitation by the 79 coastal construction control line, allow for development without a variance, but not see new habitable structures or expanded habitable structures seaward of the coastal construction control line.
The 79 line or the?
The 79 line. That's the yellow line.
Yes, no, I'm just clarifying, 79 line.
Yes, the 79 line.
You keep using the word administrative variance. Can you define that for us, please?
I'm sorry, it's administrative permit.
Okay.
So I'm sorry, it's an administrative permit. So what would happen is if, say, for example, if someone was going to put in a pool in a trellis, that would be seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line. They could apply to the town with those plans. And it could be approved internally by staff through an administrative permit. And then the issuance of a building permit for that would just be subject to FDIP approval.
So is it subject to staff's discretion at that point?
It is. And the way this is drafted is that unless, the way this would work is, once that application for the administrative permit comes in, staff would then notify the adjacent residents. And the adjacent residents, what's currently in here, they would have 14 days period of time to comment. So that would go to a 300-foot radius. The notice of, hey, we've received this application for an administrative permit. They're going to construct seaward of the 1979 coastal construction control line. You have 14 days to comment. The way this would work is if staff receives substantial negative comments or staff has other major concerns, possibly those shared by FDIPs, staff can deny the permit and let the person go seek a variance. That way, they would have to come before the Board of Adjustment to seek to do what they're doing. Otherwise, staff can approve it. For example, if there's no comments, so they're all positive comments from the neighbors, and the staff doesn't see any major issues, they can approve it and then the person can go forward and construct so long as they get their FDIP permit.
So in kind of summary is that when 2020-05 was passed, there were some unintended consequences. Yeah. And this is an effort to clean up some of those unintended consequences that have come to light over the last few months in 2020-05.
Can I ask you a question? Why did we, we didn't have 2020-05 before. Why did we need it there? What was the reasoning behind making it there?
I wasn't here at that time, but my, my understanding was at that time there were concerns about development seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line. And, you know, around 2020, there started to be an emphasis on coastal resiliency and the idea of you need to start protecting your coast. And if your coast gets overdeveloped, the water's got to go somewhere.
But, you know, someone paid a butt-ton of money for their land. If they're falling into our normal, this is just my feeling. If someone's falling in and they can get the permit from the, I forgot the.
DEP.
DEP to build their house habitable, whatever. If the government's basically saying it's okay, why are we saying, well, we don't want you to do that. You can have a porch there, a pool, or a covered tiki hut, but you can't have it habitable. If the DEP says you can have it and it falls into your percentage of land, that's just my personal feeling. Why are we taking something away from someone? For their land they bought, they own it, they paid for it. Why are we deciding what they can do with their land as long as it falls into our top coat there?
Well, it's a problem, Kristi.
Thirty-five percent of all our ratios and all these other things. I'm just wondering why we even.
Kristi, or someone, can you give the DEP process? How, I'm sure it's pretty thorough. I'm sure it's very restrictive. I mean, can you just give us a little flavor on what someone has to go through in the DEP process?
I don't know. Mr. Gorman can give more.
I'm really not familiar with the DEP permitting process.
Tara.
More technical, please.
Yes, it's a much more.
I had to reply to it, which is heavier concern.
Yeah, I mean, it's a permitting process like any other permitting process, honestly. You have to, it's a little bit more environmental. So you have to get environmental surveys and those kind of things. So, you know, and it's, it's better on government. So it could be a little longer than what we'd say. But I did want to mention that I think this came along, part of when this came along was when we were doing all those seawalls. And when those properties, their seawall or lack of seawall, depending on where it was, just collapsed. And we had to put in all the seawall, all the new seawalls.
This is on the ocean, this is on the ocean, right? Okay.
So it's really, it's really safety as well. It's kind of like any other where you have one permitting process and another permitting process and you're kind of overlapping. And this is why it's more kind of like administrative than if they say it's okay, then we say it's okay. But we also need to know what's happening in the town on people's properties. So we, it's more often, okay, if DOT says it's okay, then we say it's okay. But we also need documentation. That's a majority of what it is.
Can't only rely on the state.
Yeah, I mean, we always, it's, there's like a hierarchy. So same with the Army Corps. We need permit from them, they kind of, as long as they get that, we kind of say. But we also have our own little municipality restrictions or standards or whatever you want to call it, code. And they can be different because DOT is only looking at that seawall and only looking at that line for environmental reasoning. So we might have a little bit difference that they don't really look at that, but we do. In terms of, I don't know, let's say far, I mean, I don't think that's.
Floor area ratio or.
Yeah, yeah.
They're not going to care if people, they're not going to care about our percentage.
Our setbacks might be a little different than theirs' setbacks.
But as long as they fall, the government wants, and they fall into our setbacks, I don't know why we need this. That's my.
But basically, it's a permitting process.
And as long as we have drainage and the property's holding its water, you know, taking care of RX filtration, everything else.
Right. I don't think DOT, DOT.
They don't care about that.
They don't look at drainage.
Yeah, they're not caring about that. But you are, but as long as the house fits into theirs and it fits into our section, I assume that someone's house was stopped or whatever because this ordinance came about and he was probably already built it and had all his plans together. And all of a sudden, the town changed its ordinance and he had to make a smaller house then.
I was around when this came up. And I had some misgivings at that time. And some of them are addressed with what Kristi has done. But this whole 2020-05 was not driven by anybody on planning and zoning. It was driven, it was staff-driven. I hate to blame people, but that's where it came up. And we relied on information that was provided to us by people that were expert, or we thought so. And it was driven by our desire to make sure that homes would be safe and conform to our code. So it wasn't anything we did on planning and zoning. It was, we were responding to something that staff presented to us as a matter of safety. And we, it was largely written by people other than planning and zoning. And we approved it. It went to the town commission. There was no complaint from the town commission. They voted unanimously for it. And at a fairly recent town meeting, I felt like Rick and I were the only guys left standing from that event. We, we were excoriated by commissioners for what we've done, like we've done it to disadvantage property owners. And that's far from the case. So let's not worry about what's happened in the past. What Kristi's put forward, I think, corrects it going forward.
Right. And I think to Mr. Varguer's point, because there are several ways to, to address this. And I think, you know, your point is well taken because one of the things the town could just do is say, all right, whether it's the 97 coastal construction control line or the 79 coastal construction control line, let's just solely rely on FDIP. And that's sort of what existed prior to 2020-05. And that's, and that's absolutely one way that, that we could proceed. However, I think as what Tara's pointing out is oftentimes as municipalities, you want to provide some additional sort of thresholds so that the town knows what's going on. It's certain, we're certain that the neighbors know what's going on. And there's an opportunity for the town to comment and for the neighbors to comment. So what I tried to do in the administrative process is to make it administrative. So if there's no problem with it and the neighbors don't have any problem with it, we just rely on FDIP for its technical review. However, if we have neighbors that have comments on it or there's a significant concern with the safety of what is being proposed, then the town has an ability to step in and say, hey, wait a minute, timeout. We understand FDIP may approve this, but for the town, we'd want to take a closer look at it because the town has concerns. So that's why, instead of just sort of ripping off the Band-Aid and saying, let's go back to pre-2020-05 regarding our coastal construction, let's at least have an administrative process so that we can get additional eyes on it beyond just the state. So that's what I've tried to do here. Obviously, the other route is to leave what's in place that if it's any construction that's seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line, you have to get a variance. But I think we all sort of recognize that that's a bit stringent and creates hardships. So this is sort of like the, I thought maybe a middle ground.
Thank you. Commissioner Ray, I think everyone else has spoken up. I want to make sure you have an opportunity.
Yeah, I just, I think I agree with Steve in the sense that I don't think we need to recreate the wheel for our town. I think we should follow the state of Florida follows. And I do agree that it is nice to ask neighbors with their opinions and that's important for our town. And I agree with that, but I don't agree with it being so restrictive. And to your point, they've paid a lot of money for these properties and should be able to develop on them.
They've paid a lot of money. And our town code's going to restrict what they're going to build, do with their lot.
Exactly.
Anyway, so they can't just build their house right to the seawall. We have our setbacks, we have all the other things in place. Seems like everything's taken care of in the code.
I think it's time to open this up to public comment. And if anyone would like to speak to it, please step forward, state your name. Please speak and address, be clearly into the microphone so we can all hear. And, and I think there's a time limit of three minutes. I'm sure you won't use it all.
My wife has lovingly given me her three minutes as well. Al Nar, 6107 North Ocean Boulevard. First, let me say this is refreshing, this meeting. Having been through the process of getting a variance and everything else that's required near the water, very good to hear you all come to this conclusion. You know, I've been through it and I wish you were here earlier. Anyway, speaking of cleanup under that heading, Katrina, can you please put up that zoning map with the colors on it? And if you can, yeah, if you could put it vertically. So Corinne is at the bottom.
Can you also start the clock, please?
Oh, I want to.
He says.
I've heard that before.
We have to see the overhead first. Okay, if we can zoom up, zoom it down a little bit. Okay, that's good. So if we look at the very bottom, you're looking at south. You're looking at Corinne Street. And then we go up to Anna. And those homes between Corinne and Anna are RSE. The criteria for RSE is 100-foot width lot and 20,000 square feet of coverage. Now we go from Anna Street up to Ocean. And those homes are RSE. But look at the size, look at the size of the lots. They are truly 100-foot and 20,000 square feet. They are RSE. Since time began here in this town and those lots between Anna and Corinne were divided and sold off and developed, there's only one home between Corinne and Anna that's RSE. That's the house on the northwest corner. You could see the lot. It's bigger. Most of the homes on that section between Anna and Corinne barely meet, but just about RSF.
If I can interrupt you for just a minute. You were doing a great job of addressing the next agenda item.
Oh, okay.
And I don't, which is, which is fine. But we have not gotten to agenda item four. And so either you can continue and we can incorporate. Because I think when you hear the introduction from the town attorney, there's been a real attempt to answer the exact things you're addressing in agenda item four.
Right, I'm just saying, now I'll conclude. Today, now, the way things are versus how they were back then, shouldn't that be rezoned? That's all.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Terry Brown, agenda item three.
My turn. No, I want to take, not talk in any technical language. And David has a memory and you have a memory and I have a memory. And I'll give you my memory of how this goes happen. There was a house which Al Nar knows about, 6029, which was an old house, the Joe House, that a couple of different people bought it. And the last guy before this owner had bought it and renovated it. And the lot size went from Old Ocean all the way down to the ocean. You get me? You know what I'm talking about? They calculated the floor area ratio past the seawall. They already had a seawall down to the ocean and came into the town and wanted to put an addition to it. There was already a couple of additions to it. But they wanted to put a box addition here and a box addition there. And that's what it looks like, boxes together of a great old house. So there was an uproar because they were cramming all this housing stock, this structure onto this lot from the seawall back to Old Ocean. That's what happened. And that's how this got started. It had to do with people not wanting to see big, huge boxes stuck on these small lots from the seawall back to Old Ocean. So that's the, that's the real reason that was driven. Everybody came up with all these reasons about putting it in the code as the coastal construction line and the buildable area. But the real reason was that one structure.
And the DEP.
And it's now being tried to be sold for almost $15 million.
And the DEP permitting process didn't do anything to help the town's property.
But DEP is going to stamp anything you put in front of them. That's just the way it is.
Thank you, Terry.
Carolyn Hassidy, Seven Hudson. Just to lend a little historical context, and you guys probably remember, but I've gone back through all the minutes from 2019 to 2020, leading up to and during this whole process. And it was actually at the, at the urging of a commissioner at the time who works for coastal resiliency, directed staff in drafting this ordinance. And it was well-intentioned. Where the usable land area that Terry's referring to language came from appears to come from the town attorney. And it wasn't well discussed at the time. It was put in the ordinance and basically moving the property line from the mean high watermark to the 79 line. And it didn't get a lot of discussion. It was interesting. There was a lot of talk about, you know, the doom and we want to do this for sustainability, set the example for the town. But there was not a lot of discussion about that part of it that's creating all these problems. that's creating all these problems, so.
That's very helpful. Thank you, Commissioner Cassidy.
That wasn't me.
Any other public comment on this Agenda Item Number Three? Okay, commissioners, do we have a motion? Do we, what's your, what say you about this?
I'm still just a little unclear as to, as you discussed, the administrative permit that's required. Christie, knowing that, as you said, if there's some comment from the adjoining property owners, or as you said, I think a 300-foot radius, if there's too much negative comment, then it goes, it pushes itself to the Board of Adjustment. Is that correct?
The town manager, Desneet, can push it to the Board of Adjustment because ideally, we don't put any town staff in that position of having to make a decision between application and in public comment that's negative on that application.
So that always puts it in a position where it could get back to, which we're kind of trying to, I feel like we're trying to get away from, having a variance process, it gets it back to a variance process.
Right, and you're absolutely right in some respects. I think, you know, I'm trying to figure out sort of, it's always the, trying to figure out a compromise between just relying strictly on a state agency versus a municipality having somewhat control, it is always difficult. With the variance process from a legal standpoint, if someone came in for an administrative permit and staff, for whatever reason, didn't feel comfortable, there was a bunch of negative comments, and went to the Board of Adjustment, Board of Adjustment is in a quasi-judicial manner. All of the applications for variance come before them in that manner. So what that means is, depending on the outcome of the variance hearing, it can be appealed to circuit court, which, from a legal standpoint, I like because it really puts a limitation on the litigation. Because all it then is just an appellate review, and it's free, so you don't have to go through discovery and do something that can really extend your litigation. So from a legal standpoint, that's why it's kind of recommended to still go to a variance and have it heard in a quasi-judicial manner. But you're absolutely right, that then there still is that variance limitation. And I can't tell you at this point what this will look like and whether or not this is going to create a non-issue because everything, you know, for the most part, is going to get approved administratively. I can't tell you that. But what I can tell you is that if we leave what's in place, I think it is a hardship with making everybody get a variance, but just relying on FDEP, you will lose any kind of local control over the issue.
Oh, I get, I get that.
So that's where, and that's where you've got to decide what you want to do. And if we just want to rely on FDEP, that's fine. We can totally revise 6718 or just take it out so that all construction seaward of the 97 coastal construction control line, we just leave up to DEP.
I like having our hand in it to some degree, but I'm just concerned that the, if the neighbors look at the building and don't like the way it looks, you know, they could say, hey, listen, let's, we don't like the design of the building, right? It's not.
Dave, go ahead.
Yeah, I think I'm on firm ground to say that the existing town commission does not like 202005. And what we're doing here is, are these things that were, this ordinance, proposed ordinance and the next one, is that consistent with their desire? Or maybe we should just ask them. Because they can, they could have gotten rid of it at a meeting and did not.
Christie, if I may comment, I haven't voiced an opinion on this. And I think, as I said in the introduction, you really have to look at this and number four together. Because if you looked at only this change, it doesn't solve the problems that number four, Agenda Item Number Four does. But when you, if the commission should choose to pass Agenda Item Number Four, then these issues and the smaller lots go away. And what we're doing then is really, with Agenda Item Number Three, regulating the larger lots along the coast. And I think that's a good idea. I really don't feel comfortable relying on FDEP to be our oversight. We're a town and we have a purpose. And, you know, I'd rather see us amend as proposed 202005. And if it comes around that there's still problems with it, we can be amended again. But just to say, let's abolish 202005, I think has unintended consequences that I'd prefer us not to go down that path. You know, I'm one vote on this commission, but I wanted to share that. Tara?
Can we be clear as to what we're talking about? Like, DEP permits versus town permits? What are we saying? Like, anything that's going to be built doesn't have a permit? Because that makes no sense. You're still going to have a permit for the property if you're putting a new house on it.
Correct.
Like, where are we talking, what are we talking about here?
Right, your question is, what's the additional administrative permit?
Why, yeah, yeah.
I'm a little confused here.
Because I think we're going really deep, but we don't even really define what we're talking about.
Well, I think what this is, what I attempted to do was, right now, let's go back in time before 202005. If someone wanted to build something seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line, they, back then, they might be subject to development review before the planning and zoning board. It would be dependent on what they were proposing and developing. That review, as you know, is an architectural review board review, and they review it. It would go through a zoning review, and our town planner would review it to make sure it's consistent with land development regulations. If that got approved, then it goes for building permits. The building official to review the construction documents and then issue a building permits. They would also need their FDEP permit. So when 202005 went into place for that same type of construction, now they would have to go before the Board of Adjustment to get a variance, if anything was seaward of the coastal construction control line, 79 coastal construction control line. So what this is attempting to do is to put, to allow the town to take a closer look at what they submit to FDEP in terms of construction seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line administratively. Don't have to come before planning and zoning, don't have to go to the Board of Adjustment. And assuming that there's no administrative issues from town staff or from perhaps the neighbors that are sensitive in nature, because if someone just doesn't like your plan, I think, you know, that might be to the discretion of the town manager, Desneet. But to then just simply approve it, condition on FDEP approving it. So all it's really doing is just giving the town the ability to look closer because the requirement is you submit what you're going to submit to FDEP to the town. So we can take a closer look at it. Also means that your neighbors can take a closer look at it. So that's all it's doing. If the feeling is the town doesn't need that administrative oversight and we want to leave it up to FDEP, then that's the consensus, and that's what we can provide to the town commission. The town commission has had similar discussions about this. I think, I can say that the majority of the town commission is not in favor of what Ordinance 202005 did. But I haven't got specific direction yet to repeal it wholesale. It's still trying to find that sweet spot between repealing it wholesale and pulling it back somewhat to address the current issues.
Can I just throw one thing in here? Because it seems like we're saying, oh, whatever DEP says, we're going to just do whatever, you know, the DEP says you want to build it right to the beach, you can do that. We're not saying that. We still have town codes. You have your 35% lot, I think it's 32 on the big lots, maybe 32% coverage ratio. We have all these other setbacks in place already. So it's not just turned over, but the DEP says it's okay. It also has to conform to our town codes for setbacks. It has percent lot coverage ratio, exfiltration, drainage, you know, all these other things. So we still have our town code in place. It's not letting somebody just build a massive box right to the beach. Nobody can build a massive box. We have things set back where you can't, you know, there's a lot of town codes showing how the homes need to look, rebuild, things like that, windows, et cetera, et cetera. So I'm still, I'm just still, like, forget it there. That's my opinion, so.
I think the thing we have to remember is, in the end, it's the town commission has to make this decision.
Yes.
And so we're trying to give some advice, best advice we feel like we can. And as Christie said, and I've been at meetings and Dave's been at the meetings, we've never heard a, I've heard people in the audience say repeal 202005. But I think the commission believes we need to have some level of regulation. And hopefully, we've put forth here that compromise that, and picked up solving some of the unintended consequences of 202005.
I'm still unclear, I'm just still unclear as where the, like what I was saying, where is this administrative permit in the overall process?
Yeah, like, what's an example?
Yeah, that's, you can give examples.
So let's say this is in place, okay?
Yeah.
So what would happen is, let's say, for example, a property owner comes in to redevelop their lot adjacent to the ocean, and they're building a new habitable structure, and then other non-habitable structures and the non-habitable are seaward of the 79 line. That would come initially before this board for a development review, which is really an architectural review. Prior to that, the town planner and the zoning, and to some extent, the town engineer would look at the initial plans. But they're not that detailed, they're not construction documents at that point. So they would come before this board for development review. Assuming it passes, then they would start to begin their process of developing their construction documents. And depending on where they're at with their permit application to FDEP, once they are submitting to FDEP, they would submit to the town under the administrative permit process for everything seaward of the coastal construction control line. So what would happen would be, is you could have a concurrency type of review because that FDEP permit application would come to the town. Also, the construction documents would come to the town for review. The building permit obviously would be conditioned on FDEP approval, and your administrative permit for the construction seaward of the CCCL would be conditioned on FDEP permit approval. So once you got approval from FDEP, if everything else was approved, then you're off and running. So in thinking about the entire process, more than likely, it would come after you get development approved, where they actually start preparing your construction documents and you're submitted to FDEP.
Seems like a lot.
Over the process.
Yeah.
I think we need to bring this Agenda Item to closure.
Yeah.
You know, in, since there seems to be a variance on this, I will lead off in making a motion that we make a recommendation for approval of this ordinance as drafted that we just reviewed. Do you have a second?
I just have a quick comment on, because it interties with item number four so much, so I don't know where to comment on it. But in 6717G, that area taken into consideration for determining lot size and usable land, my understanding from the meeting minutes and attending town meetings is that the commission wants to address both the RSE and RSF together. Like, not just address the RSE properties, because there are single-family residences that are affected by this. So if we just do it for RSE, it's, we have to do it again when a single-family resident wants to redevelop and they're affected by it. So that's G in this, and I don't know if we want to address that.
That's addressed in the next ordinance.
That's what, but that's what I'm saying. Like, it is in this, I'm sorry.
The commission actually asked for, to the extent possible, to separate out the issues. So what I was trying in this one is to really only address the current concern with the limitations on
Okay.
construction seaward of the CCCLs. The issue with that language you were just talking about, I address in the next ordinance, because that really gets into the specifics of the different zoning districts and how that impacted it.
Yes.
As I think, an awful lot of the concerns that homeowners have
Yeah.
comes up in Agenda Item Number Four.
Yes, I agree, but it just leads into this one, so I wasn't sure.
So we do have a motion, and I'll second it.
Okay.
We're just sending it forward to the town commission.
Send it forward to, so I'll restate the motion. The motion is to send forward the proposed amendment to Ordinance 202005 as drafted by the town attorney. And let's call for a vote. All in favor, say a. A?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion dies at three to two. I think it's time to move on to Agenda Item Number.
So then, we need a motion to make a recommendation because if there's no recommendation, that's fine. We can take it to the town commission and say, there's no recommendation from planning and zoning, but they prefer to hear a recommendation. So if the recommendation perhaps is to change this ordinance so that the only, take out 67-18 and simply allow all coastal construction to be subject to DEP permit, that can be the recommendation.
I'll throw a motion for that myself.
Right, second, I second that, yes.
And it's second, okay.
Yes, second.
I'd say just delete.
Can we have a motion and a second? Can we restate what the motion is?
To delete, what is it, 67?
6718, which would
67.
Couldn't place the administrative permit process for any construction seaward of the 79 coastal construction control line, and instead, to just have perhaps all coastal construction rely on FDEP.
And the town, so we still have a town vote.
So just
Yes.
clarify, how is that different than abolishing Ordinance 202005?
That's what I'm saying, abolish it.
Well, 202005 did several things.
Okay, so it is a difference.
So there is a difference. So this is part of what 202005 did, was to put in the variance requirement for construction seaward of the CCCL, the 79. So if we want to simply repeal all of that, then that can be the recommendation. So on this draft ordinance, what we would simply do is really take out 6718, and then in 6717, we would clarify that both for the 97 coastal construction control line and the 79 coastal construction control line, this would apply. Now, what this, my understanding is, and actually really does, is it just relies on FDEP for a permit. There are some limitations in here in terms of the town could require a bond, the town
Sorry, could require what?
A bond.
Okay.
A bond. And there's some additional little, you know, provisions. But my understanding is, in practice, this means we just rely on FDEP, because I've never had a 97 seaward construction project held up under this provision, so.
Everybody clearing what we're voting on? Okay, we're, then, who is in favor? Say yes.
Aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Dave, I'm opposed.
Yeah, I'm opposed as well.
Thank you. Now we're to the big item on our agenda.
Yes. All right, so let me, let me give some further background on this one. This one is primarily This one is primarily, is, addresses two issues. And I thought about breaking this one down into two ordinances, but I didn't. The first issue that this ordinance addresses is the language that we discussed in 6717G, which was put in place by ordinance 2020-05, which restricted your usable lot area. And so basically, for those parcels adjacent to the ocean, any property that they owned, which is in their property boundaries, that is from the 79 coastal construction control line, seaward, is eliminated from their lot size and lot area. So what this did is, for purposes of redevelopment, it shrunk those lots so that that part of their property could not be considered for purposes of redevelopment. So what this ordinance does, and it's at the, towards the end of the ordinance, in section three, it deletes that prohibition or restriction on lot size from the RSE district. And then the rest of the ordinance.
Only from the RSE district?
Only from the RSE district, and I'll, I'll explain why. The rest of this ordinance, for the most part, is intended to address the consequences of that and at the same time, address the lots Mr. Narra was talking about on Old Ocean. So what, it might be easiest to do is to sort of walk through the draft ordinance. If you go to section two, the first amendment is in 64-1, which is your zoning districts for the town. The first zoning district that's addressed is your RSF, that's your residential single family. And what I did there was to clarify that the setback line for construction is the 79 coastal construction control line. And that's actually really what exists now in part. But I had to clarify that because it wasn't clear in the code because it said 25 feet from the waterway, which, since RSF includes properties on the inner coastal and the ocean, I thought there should be a distinction. Now, so the question is, why didn't I delete the language from the RSF district? So the RSF district, if we have our zoning map, it might be helpful, if I can borrow this real quick, oh, it's not on this. The copy that we have doesn't fully show the southern end of town where this is really applicable because south of Corinne Street are the only residential single-family lots that are adjacent to the ocean. For the most part, those lots are allowed to get a 1,000-foot credit if they own the parcel across the street. And so, and that existed prior to ordinance 2020-05. And actually, if you look at 2020-05 and the language in 2020-05, it left that credit in place so that when 2020-05 went into effect, that credit still existed for the residential single-family parcels. Now, that credit only applies to one joint parcel that still exists on Old Ocean between Anna and Corinne Street. The rest of the parcels on Old Ocean between Anna and Corinne Street, they no longer get that credit because they're separately owned. So part of my rationale for taking this limitation language on usable lot area out for only RSE was that for RSE, nobody gets that credit except for one, the north, the most northern two parcels next to Anna Street, they're still jointly owned, so they would be entitled to that credit. And when you look at this ordinance, they're not now made part of the conforming lots because they are right now actually conforming in terms of being, still being joined. So that was one of my rationales. The other rationale for it was that the way that this is drafted is that, and this is where, it's, now I have to go back and look at all this. The way the other ordinance was drafted was to now prohibit any construction, new construction on undeveloped dunes. So in the RSF district, where you have undeveloped dunes across the street, we were still putting a limitation on being able to construct there. I have to go back and look because if we are solely reliant on FDEP to approve any construction, that may allow for those undeveloped dunes to be developed. So what I was trying to do then by limiting that usable land area and not opening it up for RSF was to ensure that those vacant dunes right now are not developed with habitable structures. Because it's my understanding too that the RSF structures that do exist across the street, right on the ocean, and further to the south, the very tip of the town, those were also concerning developments because they're habitable structures that are right on the dunes on the ocean. Now, if the desire of this commission, the desire of the Town Commission, is to see those dunes develop, that's a totally different story. And that direction can be provided, but with the recommendation of this commission on that ordinance, it does impact this ordinance because part of the rationale for not opening up that usable lot area was that those dunes, for the most part, there are a few, are not developed. So I know that there are lots that are impacted by this in the RSF district where they, the home is built across the street, and they were dependent on the entire size of the dune across the street to build them. However, what I tried to do was to make sure that those could be redeveloped, and I sort of did some rough calculations. And it looks like, for the most part, with that 1,000-foot credit, they still would be developed at least to their existing footprint, if not a little bit larger. Now, I can't say that wholesale because I didn't do calculations for every single, single-family lot that has a joint parcel across the street. But keep in mind that in your residential, single-family district, your FAR for your little, little lot area is 36% for a lot that is up to 20,000. Above 20,000, it drops to 32%. So that was my rationale. If folks don't like that rationale, we can certainly change it. The biggest change that this ordinance does is really in the RSE district. So keep it in mind that we removed the language regarding the limitation on usable lot size from 2020-05. And from the RSE district, what I did in the RSE district, which is that subsection K, is then I made some tweaks to that section. Now, again, this is all based on the discussion with the Town Commission at its last meeting that, again, they didn't like 2020-05 and some of the limitations it put in place, but that nobody gave, or the consensus of the direction wasn't to completely repeal 2020-05. So again, I'm trying to find a middle ground with this. So in an RSE district, I made the same clarification that if they're on the Atlantic Ocean, which they all are except for on the Old Ocean, that that 79 coastal construction control line is the rear setback line. Now, we go down to your maximum lot coverage. So for the lots that are on the east side of Old Ocean and all the lots north of there, right? If they have armoring, then they can have the full 32% FAR, which is the current total FAR that's allowed under the code. Now, that means that they could include all of their lot size, even those that go like.
Is that the armoring term when you use that? That's the combination of the?
It's a C1.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
So that would mean that they can use all of their lot size, even though that lot size extends to the Atlantic Ocean, for determining what is 32%. If they have armoring. And one of the comments from the Town Commission was, we should try to encourage armoring. So they would get 32%, which is the current FAR max. If they don't have armoring, then it would be 28%. The rationale there is that they would have more buildable area because they're not subject to that armoring, which they also may run into an issue with FDEP with the armoring in terms of further setbacks. So that gives them a less FAR, but again, still allowing them to calculate on their total lot size without any limitation.
Christie, I think you're talking about lot coverage, not FAR, right?
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, thank you for that clarification. Yes, that's a lot coverage. Then we get down to the maximum floor area, the FAR. And it's the same concept, and there is a typo that Commissioner Cassidy caught. It's the maximum FAR. So if you have armoring, it's 36%. And if you don't have armoring, it's 32%. Now, for the parcels on the east side or the west side of Old Ocean, they still get that 1,000-foot credit for the one in the north. Otherwise, they do include their entire lot, just like now these parcels will be able to do. So then, if we go down further below that, is the discussion on the Old Ocean Boulevard lots. And this is the comment Mr. Narra was bringing. And what this attempts to do is, it is bringing into conformity the lots as they currently exist. Because based on our research, when development came in for 6073, we determined that a lot of them were not legal lots of records because they have, they were subdivided without town approval, or they were never able to meet the minimum requirements of the RSE district. So what this does is it makes them all conforming. There's, there's two exceptions. The one exception is the two parcels adjacent to Anna Street, which are still, they, they meet the requirement in terms of ownership. But then the last parcel on the, on Corinne Street on the west side of Old Ocean, that actually satisfies all of the requirements for RSE, so it's not included. But otherwise, this is to make them all now, now conforming. So if someone wants to redevelop them, they don't have to go get a variance from lot size, lot width, or lot depth. They're all now sort of brought into conformity with that provision. Then I did a more specific provision that deals with the lots east of Old Ocean because those are very unique. And this addresses specifically their floor area ratio and allows for a reduction in some of the setbacks to give them actually a little bit more room to build. However, there is a strict requirement on the front setback because one of the concerns in town is safety on Old Ocean. And if you look at the aerials of Old Ocean currently, there are pools that are built up to the front setback or the front right-of-way line. There's other structures that are built up. So Old Ocean, in some respects, in that area, is really just a one-lane street. So the intent is to make the front setback a hard and fast rule, but to actually not have it be the full 25 feet, which is the RSE district standard. So this really goes into the specifics for those lots to allow them to redevelop. I have talked to the attorney at 6073 that their plans to redevelop have been scaled back some. And I believe that what they've scaled their development back to would now be permitted underneath, under these specific provisions. And that's pretty much what this one does. I know it's a lot to take in, and I hope I haven't been confusing. I'm sure I have, because going through this is, every time I talk to someone about it, I'm like, I have to drink more coffee because of a lot of different issues that go into trying to figure this out and what works. Again, if the desire is to completely repeal the language in 6717G, you could completely repeal it. Now, that means that it wouldn't apply to any parcels adjacent to the ocean. So that then, everything from your residential high density on the north end of town, where the condominiums and multifamily up there, going down to the RSE, the larger lots in the RSE district, and then going south to the RSF district, those would all then no longer have that restriction, which is fine. However, in trying to find sort of a middle ground, the biggest concern that was brought to me when I was drafting this was those lots in the RSE, more specifically, the ones on Old Ocean. But I do know some of the other larger lots, they have a concern about that. So that's why I specifically took it out of RSE. Most recently, I've heard the concern about RSF. So this past weekend, I went back and looked at what that impact would be if we moved it for RSF. And I believe that the impact to the RSF is still minimal compared to RSE. Obviously, on the other side of town, in terms of your high density, I have not heard that it's a concern from any of those property owners. And in fact, we have had a pre-application meeting with one high-density development that's looking at redevelopment, and they can meet that requirement. They didn't have an issue with it. So that's where I got to this. But if the consensus is just to completely remove this language, then that certainly could be the direction to the Town Commission. And then the Town Commission just can decide if they want to completely repeal it or not. My attempt here is to try not to do something where it's an knee-jerk reaction to what was done in 2020-05 and to slowly, you know, pull it back and that we do it thoughtfully. And some of this sometimes may seem like, oh, a waste of time, but I think it allows for a greater discussion like we've had this morning in terms of, you know, what kind of regulation does the town really want? In terms of, do we want to just rely on FDP or not? And, and do we want to limit what people can use as their buildable areas to try to scale back some larger developments, certainly on the coastal areas? And so that's what I've tried to do to create this discussion and for the town then to come to sort of a, you know, thoughtful decision in terms of going forward, how do you want this to look? And I am certainly open to any comments, suggestions, or a total repeal.
Questions, Christie, go ahead.
The RSF, the 1,000-square-foot credit, can you explain that? Is that in their FAR or max lot coverage, or like?
That's where it actually comes into, is if you look at 64-1 in the maximum floor area. So this is under section two. And it's RSF, which is 64-1J subsection six, maximum floor area. If the lot is separated by a street or right-of-way from the lot containing the principal structure, you get that 1,000-square-foot credit. So for those properties where they own the dune across the street, with that language in 6717G that removed pretty much all of that dune from consideration of their FAR, this would give them a 1,000-foot credit towards that dune property. And the way I understand it used to work before 2020-05 is if you own both properties and did a unity of title, meaning you joined them so they were under joint ownership, that when you built your habitable structure on the west side, you used the FAR on the dune on the east side for the size of that habitable structure. So then when 2020-05 went into effect, for all of those parcels, they no longer would have the ability to use that FAR. However, what 2020-05 did was it kept in place this 1,000-foot credit. So even after 2020-05, the RSF properties still got a credit if they owned the dune across the street.
But limited to 1,000 feet?
Correct. Which. Which, in some respects, is more and in some respects is less than what they owned across the street.
And I think some of the dunes are owned separately from the property.
I believe there's roughly fourteen where there's still joint ownership.
So that's really what we'll be talking about here.
With the one thousand foot credit code.
Okay, so that seems reasonable to me for that one.
Get your question answered?
Yeah, but I have one second question. Where did the twenty-eight percent come from for the lots without armoring? And I know that you said it was maybe to encourage armoring. Are there lots that don't have seawalls?
On RSE? Yes, yes. Now, all of the RSE lots on the east side of Old Ocean, between Anna and Corinne, they all have a seawall.
Okay.
So they would all have the...
Thirty-two percent.
Thirty-two percent, thank you.
Okay.
Now, when you go north on the larger RSE lots, there are some that have it and some that don't.
Okay.
Now, I have heard that there is a concern that some people who own those larger lots went to get armoring from FDEP, get their seawall approved, and FDEP said no. I don't know if that's true. This is just something that I've heard. So that might be something that we need to look at closer. I haven't heard the rationale of why that would be denied or not. But it's to encourage the armoring, but then also to recognize that when you do have the armoring, you've kind of reduced what your billable lot size is, realistically anyways.
True.
So without the armoring, there's an argument that you actually have more space to build on.
So the twenty-eight percent's just kind of an arbitrary number to...
Not totally arbitrary. I did go through the code, and we have a couple overlay districts where on down near the southern end of town, you have an ocean view special area where we've created an overlay district. What an overlay district is, it's within the residential single-family district, but it's a specialized district where we said, okay, for this area, the lots are really small. So we're going to set specific lot coverage and floor area ratio calculations for these smaller lots. And the calculations on that, there seems to be often a difference of four percent in their FAR. Sometimes it's greater, sometimes it's less. And it seems to be that's consistent also with your lot differences in the lot coverage. So what I was trying to do is try to keep some similar differences that are already established in the code. So it wasn't that Christie just made up four percent and...
Okay.
Then that sounds good. So that's where that came from.
And that really only affects the much larger lots?
Correct.
Okay.
Additional questions, comments?
I just want to understand, so the, what you really don't see on our map here is the RSHD zone?
On the northern end.
On the northern end, right? And so what I think I hear you're saying, the changes that you're suggesting here, that it would apply to everything that we've been talking about, but the RSHD would still remain subject to the not being able to use anything to the seaward side of the seventy-nine line?
Correct.
Okay. So if one of those condos, for instance, on the north side, the one right up near the inlet, got severely damaged in a hurricane, theoretically, you could never rebuild it without getting a variance from the town?
So that's an excellent question because it's a different analysis. If something is involuntarily destroyed like by a hurricane, then it falls, and it's non-conforming because of this language, because now their FAR is much greater than we would allow. It falls under the non-conforming provisions in our land development code. And for your existing footprint, if you are involuntarily demolished, you can rebuild to that existing footprint, even though you're currently not conforming to code. So they could rebuild to their current footprint if they were destroyed by a hurricane, even though they would have been otherwise restricted. What this restriction applies to is redevelopment. So that their redevelopment couldn't be to that same... It could be the same FAR, but they have smaller area to use it.
Why would you restrict that?
That goes back to the whole rationale of why they put this in place. And it was, I believe, as Mr. Brown, his comments were, was to limit seeing these larger scales developments going up on your coastal areas.
When you say larger scale, though, back to Steve's comments before, there's still a height requirement, there are setback requirements. There is, there are still, I would think, a great deal... That's really what Steve was saying. Still, the town has a great deal of requirements that you still have to meet.
Right. You're still going to have your setback. You're still going to have your height requirement. But your floor area ratio and your lot coverage, really, in my opinion, deal with the intensity of the redevelopment. So right now, for example, under your floor area ratio calculations, there is created a provision that your first floor versus your second floor, there's a difference so that people can't build big boxes. And that's based on your floor area ratio calculation so that the top is seventy-five percent of what the bottom is so that it architecturally looks that way. So the question is, okay, well, what if we just got rid of FAR and you didn't have FAR and we just were reliant on setbacks, your basic density calculations and height? That is one way you can do it. And Mr. Gorman and I were just discussing that in some cities, they don't have a FAR provision in residential areas.
Once you set the box, the box is set.
Once you set the box, that's the box.
It's the box.
And you can build in it.
Yeah.
And in some, they don't even have an architectural review board. So you can build a big box as long as you're compliant with those other requirements. And that's another way that you can address that. The town has always had a floor area ratio as long as I represented the town in all of its zoning districts. And if the desire is to let a condominium completely redevelop to a much bigger intensity, they could seek a variance from that provision if that provision is left in place. If not, we can just remove it. And then, they can use their entire lot size, which in some instances goes all the way out to the Atlantic Ocean, to determine how billable their lot is.
I think that would be fair if you're kind of giving that to everybody else, right?
My other question is, is we're talking about one house that you're... Or one property said if it gets ripped down in a storm, they can rebuild it the same way. But what I would say is, a lot of, I think different, but a lot of these old places, they're probably under the flood plain. You know, we have a lot of properties that are just too low. Now, we're one of the ten-foot. You know, Fienin wants us to get to ten feet instead of seven feet because of floodwaters. We have houses here in the town that are sitting way below it. We have properties, maybe even condominiums. And I don't, you know, I'm not into everything, but shouldn't we be trying to help these people instead of having to wait for it to blow down in a hurricane and rebuild it? To just rebuild that property just to make it nicer, to make it more conforming? All of a sudden, none of these properties have any, you know, like Tara does, all the drainage and things like that, all these old homes, they don't have drainage, they don't have this, they don't have that. When we rebuild things, we're actually building the town better. That's just, that's all I got to say into this. So instead of waiting for it to blow down in a hurricane and saying, oh, you can build your box back, why can't that person, not box, but build your property back? Why not let people just be able to know what they want? They're to try to just encourage making the town better. We have places on Spanish River Drive where the road's sitting at a foot there. They can't get in their driveways because we can't raise the street because the, one of the houses, it's sitting at like a three and a half or four-foot elevation. You know, street's too low. We can't raise the street to get everybody else up because that house would be under the street. So there's a, that's just an argument on redevelopment to not stop somebody and wait for a hurricane.
Are we talking about the end of town or in general?
I'm just talking in general. That's just my thought in general.
And I think there's broad issues which we as a commission will address over time. As I read this, Christie, get me wrong, this is really focusing around solving issues between Corinne and...
Single-family homes.
That section in there. And maybe some of these things need some other readdressing. I'd like to open the floor up to a public comment, if there is any. And if anybody, if anybody, you've made it... You addressed the comments exactly to this issue. And I think it, as described, covers the things you were asking about, hopefully. Terry Brown?
No, I'm just, in the scheme that Christie's talking about, which I have understood perfectly, does it take into consideration the Department of Health and the septic tank? And if someone wants a pool, I mean, we're talking about stopping at the seawall, regardless of what the code says, you can't go further than that. So, and the percolation of the water runoff. I mean, is that all taken into consideration into the changes that you're recommending making? Just in that area, we're only talking about one area.
Right. It is in terms of the existing regulations address those concerns, and they go through the town engineer's review. But those are additional limitations on really your buildable lot size. They're just no longer specifically spelled out.
Yeah, so buildable area still can change.
Correct.
Yeah. Thank you.
For the, for the becoming more restrictive. Because having built a house six years ago, the new septic systems, that, you know, it's unbelievable. And Steve, you must know. It's, no, it's, it's very special.
You're not building your house without getting your septic.
Oh, gosh, yeah.
You're not getting a permit without septic. Got to get past Tara over there.
Other additional public comment? Then we'll consider public comment closed. Commissioners, what do you wish to do?
I'd like to make a motion to support this, but add in the RSHD area as well. And so it's not limited, just like you're trying to take, pull the limitation back off of the other RSF, RSE with the specifics for, of course, the Anna Street, which I think, Christie, you did a really nice job with that, the Anna Street, right?
Okay, thank you. One thought I was just having on that, and maybe Mr. Gorman knows offhand, I believe most of those properties, not all of them, would be allowed to come in as a planned unit development so that I believe in that instance, they are not, I think, limited to a specific floor area ratio, are they?
I think that's correct, yes.
Yeah, so I think it's a good recommendation. I want to look at it closer because I hadn't really looked at it. Because if they can come in as a planned unit development, then that might be another way to address it. Because I think that's what we try to encourage because that gives them a lot of flexibility in how they can redevelop in those high-density lots. So, but we can certainly include that in the recommendation if that's the will of the commission.
So since this is a recommendation, we can...
You can make a recommendation.
We can make it, we want this plus Christie to work in, look into the other and report to the commission about it. Okay? And do we have a second on the motion? Dave, do you want to make a comment about the motion?
Oh, yeah, just with regard to the Anna de Corinne homes that are seaward.
It's been answered. Okay. And is there a second on the motion?
So the motion is to approve it, or recommend to approve it as is, and then look into high-density as like a separate?
The RSHD to make sure that we're, you know, that we're not limiting those lots as well under the...
I'd like to second it.
Yeah.
And since it's a recommendation, we don't have to have it fully refined. Okay, let's call for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Then it passes. Thank you. We have one other item, commission comments. Commissioner Vargad, do you want to address that now or wait till the next meeting?
I can just, I'll go real fast here, fast as I can. So, anyway, back to two thousand, I think it was about two thousand eighteen is when we started out having Architectural Commission, I guess, pending its own review homes to come into the town. We didn't have it before then. We relied on the town's codes. You know, seventy-five percent cycle floor, thirty-five percent lot coverage ratio, et cetera, et cetera. If you look at the town code, you need X amount of windows and font. You can't just build like a house, you know? There's a lot of codes to say, you need to build a home. Before then, people could get their plans together, get a health department permit, get through, you know, drainage, everything else, and just build their home without... And it's, people are, I don't know, I'm like the American type guy. I buy my land, I spend a lot of money on it, do what I want. No, you have to assume nobody's going to want Ronald McDonald's at their house or anything like that. You have to build a house that's totally crazy looking. We all have our own feelings on whose house and how it should look, et cetera, et cetera. But I just want us to explore, when new houses are coming in for review, why is our process, from architects and from personal experience with customers, everybody, our process has become something that takes nine months to a year. There's a lot of staff has to go through a lot of things. We have to go look at these homes a lot that are really, have to already conform to the town. And it's not just a quick, easy, snap, snap, snap process for any of the architects. It's costly, time-consuming for the owner. And just to put one last thing in perspective, back in two thousand and twenty, I bought a piece of land in Manal Pan. They have an Architectural Commission. I bought the piece of land in September. I made it through their Architectural Commission right away and made it through, and actually I had to get a variance because of the ten-foot heights we changed to everything else. I had a building permit by January fifth. I had a customer doing their home. It took almost, we weren't building their house till, I think, June or July there of the same year. So six months, six months more. How do we make this commission for people that want to build a new home friendlier? Because people are spending a lot of money to build, buy their lots, buy their land. And they just want to live in the town. It's not like people are just doing it for fun. And sometimes it can take almost as long when you have a homeowner wanting to build their house to go figure out their plans and to try to get through the commission and then come into the commission, oh, maybe your window should be six inches bigger. We think this, we think that. But if it conforms to the town's plans, why are we even here? That's my question. Why do we have to make such a big, long process? And you pretty much have to have the drainage plans, everything already. Why not just have people make a little, you know, rendering of their house? We had like Architectural Commission light, I called it light in the beginning, where you're just kind of, here's floor plans of the house, here's what it's going to look like. Here's an artistic rendering. Guys like it'll pretty much look very close to that. You got to get through landscape, you got to get through drainage, you got to get through the town code. Why do we need to make it such a, I don't know the word, but such a huge process for everybody to get through? When Manal Pan and other towns can do it, click, click, click. Because they want, they want you to build your home. And who are we really to tell people how their house should exactly look? That's my only comment. We can look at it later.
Well, I largely agree with Steve. I think we probably along the way made it too difficult. The Architectural Review Board was originally just suggested by, somewhere along the line, it was given more authority than that. And I frankly think we got in the way at a number of homes that we, it just got too nitpicking.
Yes.
So I think that we should get away from that. I do think, though, that when the plans come forward, we've got to know about the drainage, we've got to know about all the other items other than the way it looks. And I don't think that that's, is that a hardship?
It is, really, because to get all your drainage to go all the way through, I mean, the drainage is a big part of the whole home. So once you're doing all this, you're basically creating all your plans to put in. I mean, how about just like, I know there's, we do like a preliminary home plan, preliminary landscape idea, and a preliminary drainage. But it might change in the end, just preliminary. Like, maybe one gets to Tara, she says, I need better calculations, better percolation tests. Know exactly, you know, things might change as you finish the house. Maybe people are changing patios, but why are we going? There's got to be a way to make it easier. Like I said, for some reason, and I could talk to architects, but some reason Manal Pan walked in with like a house plan, preliminary idea of drainage and what the landscape was going to look like. And in the end, it all had to pass... And in the end, it all had to pass health department, because Manalapan has septic tanks, it all had to, so things were shipped around, had to pass health department in the end, had to get through their town drainage, you know, make sure it was all percolating and drainage was happening properly, all the water was held. But there has to be a way to simplify this down, almost to what we started with, with the architectural commission light, as we called it, and I think you guys called it that to me in the beginning. And just, here's the idea of the house, here's the layout, here's the basic plan. Because if we have all that stuff, when we get out, why do we need drainage? Because it's not going to get a building permit without the drainage working problem, am I wrong, Tara? Like, you know, we're not going to, just because, you know, it's got to work the house in the end.
So, I don't really agree with you. I think that it goes back to the FAR discussion. These lots are whatever size, and frankly, they're like mansions, so you need to know that you have the room for all of this. And if you just approve landscaping without looking at drainage, then that's going to change.
No, but I'm saying we'd have preliminary drainage plan, but not such a detailed, you know, we're giving basically full drainage.
Right, and the other side of that is that once that goes through, if they do it well, I might go two rounds of permitting, like the permits go real fast.
But it takes such a big amount of time for customers and people that, not customers, but just new homeowners, they're just sitting here for nine, 10 months going back and forth, I don't even know what it is, I heard it's like a two-part process now. I just hear it's a big mess. But if, if we give you your plan, Tara, and we give you the plan of the house, or someone comes in with that plan, they better know how the drainage is going to work in the end.
I know, Steve, but not everybody does.
Or else they're not going to get a building permit in the end from you.
Right, right.
So it's better they have to go back and keep redesigning their house. Most of them have a good architect, good drainage engineer, and they're going to be kicked out in the permit process until they fix that. So let them get kicked out in the permit process, if they can't get it right, based on the town code, if their drainage engineer doesn't know from the beginning how it works, if their architect doesn't know from the beginning, and he does something, he builds a house that can't, can't support the land and can't do what it needs to do.
So either way, I've gotten great plans, you're almost done, you have like very few rounds of comments on the building, or you do not so much, and then you have a lot of rounds during the building. So it's really like a given.
Yes, Steve, maybe you have, I think her point is maybe you and the clients you're working with have their you-know-what together, and some other people don't.
Yeah.
Right, that's really what it comes down to.
But the problem is, is the people that have everything.
Oh, they should, yeah, absolutely should.
Why are we staring at them? If someone comes in and they have no clue what drainage is, and they have no clue what setbacks are, what do we care? That person's stuck now, he has to go redesign his house, he has to go figure that out. But most of the time, someone's going to hire a staff, they're going to hire, you know, like an environmental designer to do their drainage, they're going to hire staff, they're going to hire.
Yeah, but sometimes if they don't, if they don't, that's the question.
But we're taking, we're, what I would say, 90% of people building here are going to know their stuff. And then you just, 10% are just going to keep getting kicked out in the permit process till their house conforms.
Yeah.
That's my opinion, is let those 10% get kicked out. If they have a house that's unbuildable, hey, you screwed up, you hired Joe Schmoll, the architect that lives in Tallahassee, and there's nothing about Florida, you know, down here, hey, go start over again. They're not going to get through a septic permit, they don't have a real, a good drainage engineer, or, you know, sorry, civil engineer, they're not going to make it through septic, they're not going to make it through our town with drainage, so why do we have to get into that? Just kick the people back later, because it takes so many months, and then once you get into the permit, with the town, it can take four or five months just to get the permit after you have all your plans in because of comments and things like that. I mean, it's, you know, it's taken people over a year to build, build their new home in the town. And I'll tell you back, everybody, I don't have to agree, but back then, before we had the architectural commission, you know, could buy a lot, get all your plans together, put it in the town, still had to pass tariff for everything, you had to do it right. You're building maybe, you know, buy a lot, go fast to your plans, get through the permit process with the hybrid, checking things out, as well as ingenuity, and been building a house in four months if you did your stuff right, if you did your homework in the beginning right. So there's a lot of people that do their homework, hire the right people, and why are we messing with those guys? Kick the people out in permitting process and make them go back over and over again instead of the good people, or the smart people, or whatever people are.
I think we all support making the process simpler.
I agree.
I would think, I would hope everyone would that, would that oversimplify, but making it, yeah, absolutely, we all support that.
That's all I got to say today.
Thank you.
There's no cheap piece of land left in Oklahoma, so you're hiring someone who is reputable, someone who knows what they're doing. So I agree, and to your point on Manalapan's ARCOM, my father-in-law actually sits on that board, so I compare notes a lot on how they do things, and it does go really quickly. And I don't know if maybe we need a separate board, if we need to meet more often, like if it's us that's holding up the process on.
Paperwork, not here.
Approving something, I, I do think it needs to be easier to, for reputable builders to build here.
Well, just rep people just to get their home as long as they have a set of plans that just is right, but then you're going to get some other guy, and then decide he wants to do A, B, C, and D. Okay, well, hey, you're not making any of the town codes, you're not passing with ingenuity, you're not passing any of this, you go back to the drawing board, talk to us soon. But you got a good set of plans, you made a good presentation to us, go build your house.
Yeah.
That's what Manalapan's really like.
Thanks, you made a good point, appreciate it. One thing to remind all commissioners, who may have already done this, is that we owe a Form 1 to the financial disclosure by the end of this month, so you should have gotten that in the mail. If you don't, Kelly can get you one, so.
I sent everybody one, I sent everybody one in their email.
Okay.
I thought we already did, we already did that?
Yeah, she sent it a while, like I did it.
I did a while ago, I got a response, I got a response, I got a response from whoever I sent it to.
I don't know if my office did it, but they were supposed to.
Thank you.
Right. Thank you, consensus adjourned, Dave?
I will not be here next month.
What is the meeting date next month?
July 18th, neither will I, neither will I, by the way.
I would suggest if we don't have enough people that we take the month off in July and move it to August.
Oh, what is the August date? That was my question, that's.
We, in our initial schedule, we had left August as an optional date. So I think if we took July off, which was, Dave, we would probably have some things backed up that would need to be addressed in August. We have one already that needs to be on the July agenda?
Correct.
Okay. But we have an alternate, so that can fill one, one chair, and we can meet with as few as three, not the preference.
I'm in town.
You're in town. I'll be here too, but on a separate note, I don't know if we want to open another can of worms, can we do meetings by Zoom, like the rest of the world, or? I don't know if that's a state of Florida thing that you.
Um, you can.
Okay.
One, there's several issues. Okay, so the sunshine law doesn't require a quorum to be physically present. That is a recommendation from the Florida Attorney General that you should at least have a quorum physically present, but that's not mandated by the sunshine law, so if you were to do a Zoom meeting, you're in compliance with the sunshine. Now, the one, the issue though, is you need to make sure that it's noticed that the technology works, so it's open to the public and everybody can be heard. Since this board doesn't pass ordinance or adopt resolutions, you don't have to worry about that issue, so you can do it, it's just reliant mostly on technology and to make sure you can do it. Now, the other thing I would say is for quasi judicial hearings, I always recommend that you ask the applicant if they're okay to Zoom, because they could raise an issue that if you're not, have a quorum physically present, you know, that they didn't have the same advantage as perhaps other applicants. So quasi judicial, I always like to make sure the applicant's okay with it, but you can do it. I would turn to the town manager and town clerk in terms of, do we have the technology to do that?
And during COVID, it was allowable by the governor, and I attempted a couple of times, I can't remember whether it was full Zoom or just audio, and it, it's almost like not being there.
Yeah.
You're, you're, you're kind of, who said that? It wasn't, we're not really set up technology-wise to do very good, but it.
If that's maybe something we could look into, like technology updates, yeah, for the future, like, I mean, I work, my whole job is remote.
You're talking about money, and the town manager now wants to speak.
We don't have the camera capabilities to do it. If it's something that you guys want to propose to the commission for the FY24 budget, adding that, that's something we can look at adding. But right now, we not only don't have the subscriptions for anything other than the go-to meeting that allows us to record the audio when people call in, we don't have the cameras that would be required, and we would need to determine, are we doing a camera per seat on the dais, plus one for the podium area? Are we doing a single large fisheye camera to face the dais and one to face the crowd? So that you can, it just depends on how complicated you want to get, what kind of, you know, setup and the costs that would, it would be.
Thank you. So it sounds like on July 18, we need to meet because we have a pending application. Okay. So that'll be the next, then hopefully, we'll get a month off in August. Okay. Any other commission comments? I apologize it went so long, this is very unusual, so don't feel as a new commissioner that we're going to go two and a half hours every time, it's, we have done them in under an hour, so, you know.
Lots of time.
Hour, hour and a half, pretty typical. Thank you for your time, we call this adjourned by consensus. Thanks. Nice having you on, your comments are great.